Good evening, we've got about five minutes or so until the meeting starts. I want to do a quick audio check with those of you that are already on tonight. I'm going to turn off the screen sharing really quickly here. They can see everyone. Okay, so first of all, let me go to our attendees, which are some of our applicants tonight. I've got Harold and Dave and Joseph, so I'm going to go through and do a sound check for you all really quickly. Harold, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you very much. If you could just mute your microphone until we get to any questions for you, we would really appreciate that.
Alright, thank you.
Dave, can you hear us okay?
So Dave is not here this evening, so I've taken his place.
It looks like we have Dave Rennie on the Zoom meeting.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking Dave Campbell.
Sorry, I forgot to change the name, it's Dan Foster.
I would have never known, Dan. Alright. Here, I'll rename you.
I was getting ready to do that, sorry. Thank you.
Alright, now it should be right. Okay, and we have Joseph and Debbie, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Alright, all of our applicants, if you could stay muted until we've got questions from the commission to you, we really appreciate that. Alright, commissioners that are on the call so far, let's do a quick audio check with you as well. Chairman Busby?
Hello?
We can hear you. Thank you. Alan?
Hello.
Hello, thank you. Leo, are you muted?
I'm here, I'm here.
Thank you, sorry I cut you off guard. Terry?
I'm here, hopefully I don't have many technical difficulties tonight.
Alright, great, we can hear you. And Randy, I think I heard you too?
Yep, I'm here.
It looks like we have Kirby on as well. Kirby, can we do a quick audio check?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. Let's do a couple more audio checks here. Bruce, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. And Kathy, can you do a quick check?
Hello.
Thank you. Thanks Kathy.
Brian Roth just called in.
Thanks, Brian.
Hey Bruce, is there something you have set there to have a background that's showing up on the screen?
Yes, I put on a virtual background because the lighting is bad in my... in my office basement.
Well, do you have Zoom downloaded onto your computer so you could do that? Because you have it downloaded, or I could choose it?
No, you just go into your video settings, and it's an option, but I think you do have to download something, and then you have to load a virtual image. You have to load a picture.
It looks nice, it's kind of neat. Good work.
I need to do that because my lighting is horrible too, that's why I just go with my photo there.
So I'll spot off the Appalachian Trail.
Can you do a quick audio check for John Montgomery, please? John, you're muted.
How about now?
Now I can hear you, thank you. Okay, and it looks like we have one more attendee that joined us. Daniel? Can you hear us okay? Daniel with clockwork, I believe?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Daniel.
I have a guest.
Cute one.
He doesn't get to vote, Kathy.
I don't know, she's nicer than I am, I think. Oh, go away.
What's his name?
Maya, she's a nine-year-old great dane.
Ah, cute.
He's my girl. Alright, you have to go now. Shoot, go see daddy. I'll be right back.
Good evening and welcome to the November 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Shawnee Planning Commission. I'm Commissioner Busby. Wow. I'll do a roll call, Commissioner Montgomery?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Willoughby?
Here.
Commissioner Bean, huh?
Here.
Commissioner Wise, I believe is absent. Commissioner Brayley?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Ah, Commissioner Bingham?
Here.
Commissioner Nannick?
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the country, and one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, the consent agenda items, 1 through 3 are listed under the consent items agenda. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda, the items will be approved in one motion. Is there a request to remove an item from the consent agenda? Boy. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Busby?
Commissioner Peterson?
I move that we pass the consent agenda with the notes of staff.
Thank you, is there a second?
You're on mute. Okay, I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you, is the motion is second to approve the consent agenda per staff recommendation. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Hearing no nays, it's a move approved in unanimous decision. New business, Z-092011, FP-2420-11, Kincaid Estates at 26480, West 77th Street, rezoning at a final plat.
Good evening, this is Mark Zildorf with City Planning Staff. This case is for rezoning and a final plat. The applicant owns a 20-acre property out in southwestern Shawnee off of 77th Street. As you can see here on the project map. Zooming in a little closer, property is about a half-mile west of Mize Road on 77th Street on the north side. Property consists of 20 acres, and the property has a single-family home and a detached garage in the southeast corner of the property, up adjacent to 77th Street, and then an older, smaller barn along the western property boundary. The applicant desires to retain the existing home and detached garage on a two-acre tract, which requires the property to be rezoned from Ag to RS residential suburban. And then they intend to build a... build their home on the larger remaining tract on that property. So in order to do that, we need to rezone the smaller piece to residential suburban, and then plat the 20-acre property into two lots. As you can see here, the existing zoning in the area, the existing property is zoned agricultural, as are the properties to the east, to the west, and to the southwest. Property to the north is platted or is zoned RE, and is platted as Summerlin Estates. And then property to the south across 77th Street is also zoned RE. You also see the blue represents a couple of smaller, or a couple of areas that are zoned RS, which the district that the applicant is requesting for this particular property. Future land use guide shows pretty much this entire area west of Mize Road as appropriate for rural residential type development. And is typically what we're seeing out in this area. We're seeing large lots ranging from two acres to almost 30 acres in size, with several large estate-type homes out in this area. Sewers are not available out in this area, so the rural residential is appropriate for this type of development. The plat that is being proposed for this is a two-lot plat on 20 acres. The smaller lot 2 is two acres in size, and meets the bulk requirements of the RS zoning district. And the existing house and garage meet the required minimum setbacks for that zoning district. And then the larger lot 1 is approximately 17 and 1/2 acres in size. And then there's about a half-acre of right-of-way that is being dedicated with this plat. But all the bulk requirements for both lots are satisfied with respect to... or with their respective zoning districts. This plat is subject to excise tax. Lot 1 would be subject to an excise tax, but because it's a larger lot, it will be capped at an acre and a half. And then Lot 2, because it is already developed with an existing single-family home, would not be subject to that excise tax. Same thing goes with the open space fees or the park fees. So with that, after, Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing for this item this evening. But with that, staff would recommend... staff would recommend approval of the rezoning of Z-09-20-11, rezoning from AG agricultural to RS residential suburban for Lot 2 of Kincaid Estates. And... sorry, subject to approval of the rezoning request by the governing body and publication of the ordinance in the official newspaper. And then we would also recommend approval of the final plat. Okay, that's what's throwing me off, I got the numbers. Number 1 should be the introduction, and there should be six conditions after that. Staff would recommend approval of the final plat, FP-24-20-11, final plat for Kincaid Estates subdivision, located at 26480 West 77th Street, subject to the following six conditions. And I won't read through all those, but it's basically listed on the screen there, conditions 2 through 7, which would correspond to conditions 1 through 6 in your staff report. That concludes staff's presentation this evening on this item.
Thank you, Mark. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir, I am, Harold Phelps of Phelps Engineering.
Thank you, Harold, I appreciate it. Does the commission have any questions for applicant or staff? Commissioner Brayley, you have your hand up, and I'm not sure if it's an old hand or a new hand.
That's a new hand.
Ah, please, Commissioner Brayley.
Question for Mark. So we're not addressing any kind of rezoning for the larger tracts?
That's correct, the larger tract will remain the agricultural zoning district, which is not uncommon out here for these larger lots that are developed with single-family homes. As you can see on this slide here, we've got several large properties with single-family homes that are on agriculturally-zoned lots.
Is that just because that's in the past? And I just wondered, because across the street we've got RE, and I didn't know if that's just something moving forward that we want to be addressing. I didn't know. Educate me on zoning, if there's a reason one way or the other that RE versus AG, and what are the implications between the two?
Right, I think the RE that you're seeing to the south of 77th Street, I believe that may have been in place when this area was annexed into the county. And then our zoning... Some of the zonings were brought in and kind of assigned, if you will, when they were annexed in from the county. Basically, the differences between the RE and the RS and the Ag, particularly the RE and the RS have to do with minimum lot size and setback requirements. And the... and the reason... probably the reason the small RS piece was not zoned RE like you see in other areas, because we wanted to make sure that it was not a non-conforming situation when we got done. And because of that detached garage on the side, for the side yard setbacks, we needed to have the RS zoning instead of the RE. The Ag, the larger piece, it complies with the Ag zoning district as far as setbacks and lot size. And then this would also allow that property, if he shows to in the future, they could potentially rezone it and further subdivide it, if that was something they wanted to do. I think the property, the house, the location of the house he's wanting to build on this piece is further back on the lot up kind of in the northwest corner of the property.
Great, thanks for clarifying that, Mark.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes. Randy did ask some of the same questions that I was going to ask, but it brought up the point. And it is on the final plat where one of the conditions was, if there's any further divisions of the property, then it is... there's like $350 fee plus whatever. Was that about Lot 1 or Lot 2? And please remind me which... Lot 1 is the larger lot, right? Lot 2 is the smaller lot. But those conditions...
That is correct.
Or...
Um, let me see where you're referring to, Kathy.
It was on...
I think that may... I think that may have to do with storm drainage.
Had to do... Could have had to do with detention, but I was like, so they are... I was just curious, I was assuming...
So that is... Yeah, that is a standard... a standard fee that they... that an applicant can pay in lieu of providing detention. When detention is not required, or the property can be developed without detention, then in place of providing the detention, they would provide or pay a $350 fee per lot. And I think what they're referring to here is, because Lot 2 is already developed with a home, they would not be charged that on that lot, but the Lot 1, the larger would have to pay that fee.
And that's if they further divide it, not this division, correct?
No, they would need... they will be required to pay a $350 fee at the time they get a permit for Lot 1.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you.
Commissioner Nannick?
Yes, Mark, you referenced early on that this fits with the, I don't know, city plan or some kind of guide that west of Mize Road is going to... that's the future plan for it to be large lots. Is that based upon... what... what... where does that come from? Is that just... is Mize some arbitrary boundary? Or was there some kind of actual study done to determine that?
Well, essentially, the areas west of Mize Road, sanitary... public sanitary sewers are not available in that area. And because of that, Johnson County environmental requires a minimum lot size for private onsite septic systems to be a two-acre lot. And so that's why you're seeing nothing smaller than two acres west of Mize Road.
Is it because it's... the topography doesn't allow for sewers to come in there at some point in time, or what?
The topography is the main factor in that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant or staff? If not, as this is a rezoning, we'll have a public discussion or a public hearing on this. Does anyone from the public wish to weigh in on this matter? Hearing none, I can't tell, is there anybody at the city office?
Yeah. Commissioner Busby, this is Mark Zildorf. There is... let the record show, there's nobody here at City Hall to speak in favor or against this project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. So hearing no comments, then we will close the public hearing on the matter and be in commission discussion. Since the discussion is a little long-winded, would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Nannick?
Commissioner Nannick, please proceed, and I suggest that we make separate motions on this.
Right. I recommend a motion to approve Z-092011, rezoning Ag to residential RS for the Lot 2 of Kincaid Estates subdivision, per the condition recommended by staff.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, I can't tell who that was. I can't tell who that was, but if you don't mind, if you people continue to raise your hands, I can tell a lot better. So I think Bruce, did, were you seconding it? Did I catch the voice right? John Montgomery, please.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, is the motion a second for approval of Z-09-20-11 rezoning from AG Agriculture to residential suburban for Lot Two of Kincaid Estates, as per staff recommendations? Are there further, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carried with no nays, so it's unanimous. And the second part of it, would someone care to make a motion on that? Commissioner Beanhoff.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of final plat FP-24-20-11, final plat for Kincaid Estate subdivision located at 26480 West 77th Street, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Montgomery.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second for approval of FP-24-20-11, final plat approval for, oh boy. For Kincaid Estates. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carried again unanimous, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, SUP-1520-11, Anew Health at 6815 Hilltop Road. Staff.
Good evening, Commission, this is Stephanie Monbor with the Community Development Department. I have a short presentation for you on the request for SUP-1520-11, a special use permit for Anew Health at 6815 Hilltop Drive. The project location is at Hilltop, and that's roughly south of Shawnee Mission Parkway and just east of K7 in the Shawnee Crossings Retail Center area. Here is an aerial image of the site, and it is outlined in red. You can see Midland Drive to the north and Hilltop right to the west there. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for operation of a 20-bed inpatient mental health facility. Per Shawnee Municipal Code 17.51, a mental health treatment facility residential is allowed in the CH district with approval of a special use permit only. According to the applicant, Anew Health will provide inpatient mental health care for the senior population, patients with anxiety, behavior disturbances, Alzheimer's, and dementia. The facility will also serve those affected by mental health disorders caused by brain injury, stroke, or other neuropathic disorders. The facility will be locked down and secured via magnetic locks and swipe card access. A team of 19 employees will provide care for up to 20 patients. The residential aspect of the proposed inpatient facility is typically limited to no longer than 14-day stays. Anew Health is considered a short-term care facility and works closely with other providers that provide longer-term care. The operations have been reviewed and approved by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, ADH. The proposed special use is compatible with the existing site, surrounding development, and nearby zoning classifications. The proposed inpatient mental health facility will not negatively affect the immediate vicinity. Security measures are accounted for within the applicant. And really quickly, I think one more picture for you, this is looking from Hilltop East to the building. You can see it's an existing building, they would just be proposing to occupy this space. It has ample parking for the 19 staff members, and also if the patients were parking their car as well, there's quite a few spaces for them. Staff recommends the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, and staff recommends approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. One, the facility is limited to 20 beds. Two, the maximum week of stay is 14 consecutive nights. Three, the city council must grant final approval of the special use permit. And four, the Planning Commission and City Council shall review the special use permit in one year. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Stephanie, is the applicant present?
I'm not sure the applicant is on the Zoom meeting this evening, I apologize.
Well, that makes it somewhat complicated, or not. Since the applicant's not present, I actually, I have a couple of questions, and with not here, with them not being here to answer them, then my suggestion was rather than have a public hearing, that we table this to the next meeting. And this, I guess, we would be in discussion with staff and Commission. Does the Commission have any, any thoughts on that? Commissioner Peterson.
Uh, yes, I would agree. I'm, I'm sure if they weren't going to comply, they would not be here, but I mean, they, but since they're not available to go on the record, I do think we ought to move this to another date, for all fairness to them.
Commissioner Beanhoff.
Yes, I would agree, Mr. Chairman, that typically on things of this nature, the applicant would be present, especially since it's a public hearing. I would hate to, I would want to hear from the applicant as part of the process, so I think tabling would be appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner Les Smith. Commissioner Smith.
Sorry, Stephanie or Mark, is there anyone in the council chambers to speak on this item?
We do have one person present, which has some questions about the project. Would you like for her to ask questions?
The Commission is going to table it, no, my suggestion was going to be if no one was there and there were no outstanding issues that the developer or the disagreed with, we proceed. But if there's someone here that has questions, then maybe I'll go along with Mistress Busby and Beanhoff and Peterson and whoever else.
Thank you, Commissioner Brayley.
Yeah, I wonder, might it be appropriate if staff has their phone number handy to give them a call, to see if they can join the call? We obviously have had somebody from the public schedule time in their day to show up for the meeting, and we do have some questions, so I don't know if that seems appropriate.
I would suggest here that the person that's there that would like to ask the questions, I certainly would, I think it would be appropriate for them to be allowed to ask the question, and yet I still think it's appropriate that we table it to the next meeting. But I think that would be wise for us to let them ask the question, and either we get an answer when we actually have the applicant here, or they're welcome to come back and ask again later, so. Thoughts on that? Commissioner Smith.
I agree with you 100%. The person is here, I suppose, let's get them on the record and we get their answers for them.
Thank you. So if the person is in the, would the person would like to speak on this matter? And I'd say we need to open a public hearing so that they can speak, so if they're there, if they'd be, we're welcome to listen to their questions if they'd like to ask them now.
Commissioner Busby, we're trying to get the microphone here turned on, just give us a second.
If you'd like, I can say- That probably wouldn't be a good idea.
Is that better? Is that working?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Carol Lee Billheimer. I am Dorsey Webb's daughter, and my mother lives directly behind Anew Health. Well, it used to be the Shawnee Mission, part of the Shawnee Mission Hospital system. And we are just concerned with, we wanted to find out more about what's going to be there, and, you know, how secure it's going to be, if it's, that's, I think, our main concern, because our property does back up directly behind what is going to be Anew Health. And I was just wondering if it's the whole building that's going to be take, I mean, they're going to take over the whole building? Because we weren't aware that Shawnee Mission had, I don't know if Anew Health is part of the Shawnee Mission Advent Health plan or not. So we just kind of wanted to know, you know, the safety-wise, that was our concern. But I think she answered some of those questions, that it was very secure, going to be secured.
Thank you, Ms. Billheimer, and we certainly can ask those questions of the safety of the, especially, and how much of the building they're going to use, utilize for this, and let them know there's concern from a neighbor right next door to them. Is there anything else you'd like to ask?
No, I think that pretty much concludes. We just wanted to know what was exactly was going to go in there, so, and take over. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Very fine, and I would say this, as we have the matter of record that you're asking these questions, and I, since we will table this to the next meeting, you're still welcome to attend the next meeting and ask any further questions, ma'am.
Okay, sounds great, thank you so much.
Thank you, and is there anyone else that would like to speak on the matter in the public hearing?
Chairman Busby, let the record show, there's nobody else at City Hall that would like to speak on this item.
Thank you. At this point in time, I suggest two things, is first of all, we, we close the public hearing, or we delay the rest of the public hearing to the next meeting, as well as a motion to table this to the next meeting. Commissioner Peterson.
That was going to be my questions. The neighbor brought up a point that made me question, as in, I, Anew Health said that they were only going to do 20 beds, and is Advent Health the Shawnee, oh, the new name for Shawnee Mission Medical Center? Are they retaining the rest of the facility for other things? I think we just have a lot of, or at least now I do. So I would suggest that we table it, unless somebody can help me.
That's fine, then I think the thing is, is if someone cared to make a motion to essentially end the public hearing until we bring it up again, then that would be the first thing we should do, because asking any more questions right now with no one to answer them is kind of a fruitless thing. So Commissioner Montgomery.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we continue the public hearing and table further discussion and action on this item until the November 16th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion that, no, that closes the public hearing then. And I'd look for another motion for tabling this to the next meeting, Commissioner, Commissioner Montgomery.
I did put that, I did put both in the motion, unless you need to separate it.
Oh, very fine, very fine. So there's a motion to table this, to table SUP-1520-11 till the next meeting, which would be November 16th. Is there a second? Commissioner Roth.
I'll second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second to table this meeting, this motion to the next meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Consider the motion unanimous, thank you, moving on. Next on the agenda is text amendment regulations related to street trees.
Chairman Busby, Stephanie stepped out for just a minute, she's on the call, or on the phone with the applicant from the last item, so, I don't know, unless Kirby, were you going to go ahead and do a presentation currently?
Yeah, we, I can wait if you want to wait on Stephanie.
Well-
She's actually walking back in right now.
Mark, I think we've already made the decision to move to table it to the next meeting, so I'm not sure going back and trying to do it now is a good way to do things.
No, you're absolutely correct. I was unaware that Kirby was online, that was doing a presentation for the street trees, so I thought we might be having a moment of silence waiting for Stephanie to come back in the room, so. But with that, go ahead and let Kirby continue on.
Really, really quickly, Chairman and Commission, this is Stephanie. Could I just say one thing about the Anew Health? I know we've already tabled that, but I do have the applicant on the phone now. And I will inform her that we'll have to have her on the meeting on the 16th. Is there anything else you'd like for me to share with the applicant in preparation of that meeting?
No, other than I don't remember how we do this, but if we table it, does it end up being one of the first things on the agenda?
We can certainly look at the order of the items, but we do try and do public hearings first.
Very fine, then, if you're to praise the, to praise the applicant of that, and hopefully we'll be able to have a conversation with them next meeting. Thank you. And that would put us into the text amendments for the Shawnee Municipal Code for street trees.
Okay, good evening, thank you. My name is Kirby Wiley, and I am the Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. Stephanie, can you advance the slides to that, please? Staff has drafted a text amendment, Chapter 1757 of the Shawnee Municipal Code, which includes regulations for landscaping. And the concept of this amendment stemmed from some internal discussions on sustainability practices, and some of those additional practices that can be implemented. Additionally, the amendment came from the desire to have some consistency to practice in policy. Street trees are evident in Shawnee, but the current municipal code language does not allow them within the right-of-way, so that, in that public right-of-way between the street and the sidewalk. And so we're wanting to update that language so that we can have consistency with our code and our practice. And this topic will require a public hearing, so on the pictures here on this first screen, you can kind of see 67th and Garnett Street is an example of where we don't have trees within the right-of-way, and then with Sonia and 57th Street is an example where we do have those trees planted within the right-of-way. So that's what we're really wanting to do with this project, is to require that street trees are planted within the right-of-way with new developments. Next slide, please. And staff has researched similar code requirements to our peer communities, including Overland Park, Alata, Lenexa, and Leewood, Kansas. Each of these communities does require street trees with new developments, and includes different species requirements for, in different species lists, so each community may have it through their Parks and Recreation Department, or through, or on their website, so. Those are one of those things that we're looking to model a species list after, and for the most part, everybody is requiring one street tree per 40 feet of public or private fronted street, which is consistent with what our current requirement is. It would just be omitting that to allow street trees within the right-of-way. Next slide, please. So there are some best practices when it comes to street trees. Tom Jacobs with the Mid-America Regional Council actually had a presentation on this that I attended a couple of months back. And, you know, having those big canopies of those, of those trees when they've matured increases the walkability of streets, you know, reduces, or improves your air quality. reduces or improves your air quality, um, improving water quality, creating habitats for wildlife, um, reducing urban heat islands, um, and then advancing the neighborhood livability and quality of life and also, uh, boosters those real estate values with those large trees. Um, next slide, please. Staff has identified and discussed that there will be future maintenance that is required with these street trees. Um, we've had discussions with our peer cities and internally with our Public Works Department as well as community development to consider the future maintenance of these trees. Um, it's been determined that future maintenance for tree trimming will be on the responsibility of the adjacent property owner, similar to the provisions of Policy Statement 52, uh, and Item D where it talks about landowner responsibility for, uh, adjacent, or owners for property adjacent to the right of way. These owners are responsible for maintaining landscape elements and ensuring it doesn't encroach on public streets or alleyways. And initially, we have the adjacent property owners are required to provide maintenance on sidewalks to keep them clear of debris, um, and snow and ice. That, and that is stated in Shawnee Municipal Code 1616. Next slide, please. Next, I must have missed putting, um, I apologize. I missed putting our approved, um, tree species list in. Um, my presentation, staff will utilize, um, the great trees of the Kansas City Region as a guide to determine, um, the best street trees for Shawnee. Uh, staff will maintain an approved list and amend it from time to time. Um, and the list will be based on root structure as to limit potential damages to public sidewalk systems caused by root growth. Um, trees with shallow root systems that spread close to the ground will not be allowed to prevent any sidewalk, um, any sidewalk separation. And then separate utility easements will be provided in areas that the right of way is not adequate to accommodate both trees and utilities. Um, next up will be, um, you know, staff is seeking direction on this item from council for approval. Um, if council, if, I'm sorry, seeking directions from Planning Commission for approval, um, staff will then take the revised Shawnee Municipal Code 1717 and Policy Statement 52, which also has, um, uh, other language changes for site distance triangles, um, to City Council if Planning Commission recommends this as next step. Next slide, please. Going back, so we, this needs to have a public hearing as well. Um, so that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Kirby. Does the Commissioner have any questions for the staff on this item? Commissioner Brayley?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications as to whether or not this will be covered in the code. Is there sort of suggested minimum width between the sidewalk and curb, um, for this to occur, given that, you know, these trees are around for a hundred years? How is that going to be addressed? And then I was very curious when you were talking about future maintenance, um, specifically the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. And I want to make sure I'm clear and understand. Um, so in one of the pictures that you showed that's out west by Walmart, if the property owner's property line ends before the sidewalk, and then there's a sidewalk and the tree in the street, so that property owner is still responsible for maintaining that tree and any damage or maintenance that's required to that tree and the sidewalk. So project 50 years down the road or something that, uh, you see the sidewalk buckle because of roots protruding up, it's on the property owner, not the city to fix the sidewalk. Is that correct?
I'm going to have to see, Stephanie, do you, I'm not sure where those property lines end with that. Can you answer that question?
Hi, Planning Commission, this is Caitlin Gard. How is everyone?
Good, Caitlin.
Hopefully I can answer your questions, Commissioner Brayley. Um, I believe the first question was in regards to the width of the right of way. That is completely dependent on the street classification. So as we're talking tonight, um, we're primarily discussing residential, uh, street classifications. So that's approximately eight feet from back of the curb, depending on the location and, and the specific area that you're talking about. So it's plenty of room specifically for the areas we're, we're discussing tonight, especially with these street tree species. Um, and secondly, your question, um, uh, the area you're actually discussing, um, would be responsibility of the HOA, and that would be platted within the development. Um, generally, um, the responsibility would be upon the adjacent property owner, uh, to maintain, uh, those, those trees once plant, once planted. Um, but there are common areas within HOAs that would have, um, obviously trees, uh, within the right of way as well. So, um, you're right, uh, that picture probably wasn't the best use of an example. Um, but other than that, it would be the responsibility of the adjacent property owner.
Okay. Great, Caitlin. Thanks for clarification.
Commissioner Peterson.
Sorry about that. Uh, no, um, I'm, because the species list wasn't provided and I was able to Google it and I see this and it's a very extensive list, but it, some of them are dubbed as preference of landscape versus, and that's out of 218 trees, as well as large trees for streets. And I am assuming that list of 50 is what you're talking about. And then they specifically list low rated based on wind resistance, root structure, things like that. But then they also say most adaptable, longest life, small trees. It's very unspecific of what we're talking about unless you are specifically saying those 50 trees from that report. Um, the other thing too is I have some, not overwhelming concern, but, um, in established HOAs that I currently live in, we lost a significant amount of trees to the recent whatever bore that like killed all the trees, whatever. Wendy Parrish. Sorry about that. The thing about it is, is that replacing 20 trees to a homeowners association is quite difficult. And if, I don't know if a car careens out of the way and knocks over a tree that is three years old, that, having that be the responsibility of the resident, I'm not saying it should be the parks. I just, I'm just seeing questions and I, I think we're going to be hit with, that was not disclosed when I bought the property. You know, I have a privacy fence and then there's this, and then there's a sidewalk. I didn't even realize I had to mow that, let alone maintain a tree. I, I just have questions and you probably have answers. So I'll be quiet now.
Kirby, you want me to take that one?
Yes, please.
So there's a lot to that. I would say, um, that primarily tonight, we're talking about new platted subdivisions and new development. So while we would allow them in, um, I guess somebody could go back, uh, i- if this is passed, somebody could go back and then plant them within their, the right of way of their home. We're primarily talking about new subdivisions where we would identify specifically where those trees are located within the plat and then make sure that, um, anybody who then subsequently purchases any of those would know that those trees are already there. Therefore, it's the responsibility of the homeowner, um, just like you would maintain the grass that is in between, um, the sidewalk and the curb, uh, or that you would, um, uh, I almost said sweep, shovel snow from the sidewalk. Um, any similar responsibilities would be, um, identified as part of the tree ownership and maintenance. So, um, I'm not sure if that, um, is just an educational, um, opportunity on our part, which is something that we can absolutely do and we actually do every winter, um, as far as snow removal. So that's definitely something that we can push out, um, if this were to be passed.
Hey, I have a question.
Commissioner Nannick?
Go ahead. Now, this, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
This Allen Willoughby.
Oh, okay.
My, my, my understanding of this tree maintenance thing is, is, you know, if there's a dead limb, you, you, you're responsible for taking care of the dead limb. But it's not that if that tree dies, that you're on the hook to replace a tree. I don't, I don't think that's the intent here. It's, it's to maintain that tree. Okay. And like, oh, along Flint there between Shawnee Mission Parkway and 65th, you know, the trees on the, on the west side sometimes go clear over the sidewalk and, and, uh, and every once in a while you'll go through there and they'll be all trimmed back. Okay. And so that's what, that's what the intent of this is all about as far as I'm concerned.
That's right, Commissioner Willoughby. Um, we're not going to go around and regulate if people have removed the trees that were within their, their platted subdivision. Um, if I bought a house and it had a tree between the sidewalk and the curb and I didn't want it there, I mean, if I took it out, the city wouldn't have any, I mean, rules against that. We would prefer that not to happen because we like that canopy look. Um, but, but you're absolutely right, Commissioner Willoughby, as far as that is concerned.
Commissioner Peterson.
I perfectly understand and I, I'm glad we're going in that direction. Um, what would happen if, um, unfortunately I see a lot of signage that goes down on like medians, caution signs, stuff like that, because people are unable to turn or anything like that. Is there, I, I want trees. I love the fact that Shawnee's a tree city. This goes along with that. I agree with everything that we're doing. I just want to see if we're, we try not to miss anything the first go around. Um, so I, I really, I'm glad that's the intent. I'm glad that's where we're going. But as we start this in these newer subdivisions, obviously it's not going to be a canopy in two years with the types of trees I was seeing on that list. They're not necessarily quick growers, but, which is good. The thing is, is what happens if a car takes that out? Does, is that part of an insurance thing that they replace? I, I really don't know because it then becomes property. I'm just confused. That's all.
Yeah. And, you know, I guess in that specific scenario, um, it just wouldn't be replaced. It would just then be a, a tree that didn't grow in that location. And, you know, I, I'm not sure that that happens on a frequent enough occasion that that's something that we would need to worry about in this municipal code update, um, but it's definitely something to consider.
Well, I don't know. They've replaced the sign outside my subdivision that's at the beginning of a median probably 12 times in about two years. So I'm thinking people hit stuff.
Any other questions for staff on this subject? I have, I have one question, and that is Overland Park, it seems to, to me that Overland Park has quite a list and quite a bunch of categories for it. But quite frankly, I don't know what a CPO, a CPO, a CP, C1, or CP1, or C2, or any of that is. So I would say this, it's, I'm sure Overland Park is, it looks like it's extensive. It's very detailed. But quite frankly, I don't know any of their codes. So I'm not sure what to make of that.
Chairman Busby, this is Stephanie. Those are zoning districts in Overland Park. So they just have different code requirements by zoning district.
I would suggest in the future that we have, that we give kind of key to know what their zoning districts are and how they compare across the hours. Any other questions for staff on this subject? Commissioner Beanhoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I was curious, uh, on the list of trees, was there a list in the preliminary text that we looked at before?
This is the first time we've reviewed this item that I'm aware of.
I thought we had a preview.
We may have introduced the concept without, without any further information. It may have just been a, a concept introduction of the topic. And then the plan, the, uh, public hearing with further information was for this evening.
So will there be a specific, if the trees attached to the text amendments then? Is that the plan?
So, uh, this is Stephanie. So the tree species list is, uh, as Kirby stated, it's a recommended list from, um, I'm sorry, Kirby, what is the specific website?
Uh, it is the Great Trees of the Kansas City Region.
Okay. So if I'm not mistaken, Kirby and Caitlin, we would take that list and probably some recommendations from other communities and compile our own list. Um, we would also, and, and in other communities I've been a part of, um, we've taken that list and administratively added and subtracted as we've seen species work or not work. Um, so administratively, we would keep that list up and we wouldn't actually have it as part of the code. So we didn't need to amend it every time we needed to add or subtract species.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff on this item? Essentially, at this point in time, the commission should decide whether we want to table this to another meeting to see these list of trees, or whether we should accept the proposed text amendments and pass them on to the City Council. Now, does anybody have any thoughts on the matter? And my, and myself, my feeling is, is we don't need to wait for these, these trees because that's going to be a constantly revised list probably, and staff is going to have to deal with it. And I'm not sure that a, a list printed right now would be applicable later on. Commissioner Montgomery?
Yeah. I was just going to say I'm, I'm ready to vote on this. I don't have a need to see the list. And we do have to have a public hearing, don't we?
Correct. Oh, you're correct. My, thank you for bringing that up. Since we've had a discussion, then we'll open the, uh, public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
There is no one in the council chambers wishing to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Stephanie. Hearing, hearing no one online or no one in the council chambers, then the public hearing would be ended and we will be back in commission discussion. Commissioner Montgomery, would you care to do the honors on this?
Sure. I would make a motion that we approve the amendments, the text amendment to Chapter 17.57 of the Shawnee Municipal Code as drafted by staff.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Nannick? Thank you. There's a motion, a second to forward on to the City Council the draft amendments of Section 17.57 of the Shawnee Municipal Code. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimous again, I believe. That leads us on to the next amount of public, of, of business, and that is the text amendment regulations related to learning centers. Staff?
Good evening. This is Stephanie Monborg, Community Development Staff. Um, tonight we have a continuance of the public hearing for learning centers, the text amendment regarding the new youth learning centers. Um, as you saw in our, our report within this packet, we are requesting to go ahead and continue this to our first meeting in December, um, because we're still doing a little bit of research and we want to make sure that we provide the best, um, amendment and clear direction for your last comment. Um, additionally, we didn't want to continue it to the meeting on the 16th since we will have the homeless shelter text amendment discussion on that evening. And I know at our last meeting, we just discussed breaking those two topics apart. So I would just like to see if we can go ahead and, um, continue this public hearing to the meeting in
So I would just like to see if we can go ahead and, um, continue this public hearing to the meeting in December.
Thank you.
And that's all of my presentation.
Stephanie, if, if my memory is correct, then because we've scheduled this for a public hearing, then we should go ahead and have the public hearing in case anybody wants to comment. And then again, delay the public hearing or, or table the public hearing until the December, or is it seventh? December seventh meeting, is that correct?
Yes, it's December seventh and I believe you can either, um, just like you said, open the public hearing again this evening and then continue it. Um, that, that's a fine way to go about doing it strategically.
Thank you. So, uh, does anybody have any question for staff on this item even with regard to, uh, them working on some more information for us? Hearing none, we'll be in a public hearing then. Does anybody, buddy from the public wish to weigh in on the text amendments for learning centers?
Chairman, there is no one present in the council chambers wishing to speak on this matter.
And hearing no one online, then would someone care to motion, make a motion that we, uh, delay, we, we table the public hearing to December seventh and also table the text amendments to this conversation to December seventh. Uh, Commissioner Les Smith. Commissioner Smith.
Sorry, caught me sleeping. Um, I move that we continue the, um, public hearing for learning centers to the meeting on twelve, seven of twenty twenty.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Montgomery.
I second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on the learning centers to December seventh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is unanimous in favor. Then would someone care to make another motion? Commissioner Nannick.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, um, to, uh, I was actually getting ready to move the first one. So the second part is.
Just to table the rest, table the discussion of the committee until December seventh.
Table the discussion of the committee till the next, to the meeting in December seventh, on December seventh.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Montgomery.
Second to motion.
There's a motion and a second to table the text amendments related to learning centers to December seventh meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Again, a unanimous decision and the affirmative. That leads us on to, does the commission, or does the staff have anything for the commission?
I do not have anything, Chairman.
Thank you. Does the commission have anything for the staff? Commissioner Nannick, you have your hand up or is that an old one? Commissioner Peterson.
I move that we adjourn this meeting that we have been so good at dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
I cannot accept that from you, ma'am, but thank you for trying. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson, would you like to second that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all and good night.
Good night, y'all.
Good night. Thank you.